This is the first Tuesday of the month with a Paca City Council meeting.
Our regular scheduled first city council meeting in November. Today is Tuesday, November 1st, 2016. I call this meeting to order and we'll begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the government council are open to the public. Professor Nildus has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin State statutes. So Susan Susan Moore will be there with her counsel agenda at this meeting.
And also take roll for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a call.
Next up is the consent agenda. These are items that we'll take one motion on those. We have nothing additional. Are there any items that council would like to see move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where we would vote on those individually? Hearing none, we would need a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Hackett, second by Jillian Peterson that we approve consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda. What you see is what you have unless there's something that council would like to see changed around, we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So move.
Motion by Peterson, Dave Peterson, second by Scott Pachatsky that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Non-agenda items and announcements, we have a certificate of appreciation to Josh Peterson for his ten years of service to the City of Opaaca. Justin, if you would get this to him, appreciate that. Hold on, hold on, stay right there. So if you haven't heard, Justin is a new father on Saturday. A little baby girl, Violet Marie, right?
Seven pounds, seven ounces.
Awesome, well congratulate, and it's number five, too. Number five.
We're cigars.
Yeah. Congrats. Next, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If we have anybody in the audience or council members or staff that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any non-agenda items. Okay, let's move on then. We have unfinished business. This is, I'm going to turn this over to the council president, but there's been a couple of changes, Paul, that I need to tell you about before you do that. One is, well, basically they're both deletions. Shelley Christie does not want to be a voting member. She'll attend as a, she wants to be in attendance at those meetings, but she doesn't want to be a voting member. And then also, older person Dave Peterson is, will also not serve on that so that we make sure we have an odd number of people on there. So if you take those two off and then go from there.
Okay, thanks, thanks Mayor. The following are the mayor's appointments to the dear management ad hoc committee. Older person Alan Keeland, chairperson. Older person Chuck Whitman. Older person Lori Chestnut. Steve Johnson. Chris Anthony. Sue Renawicki. Barb Hane. Judith Schwonik. Lauren Fritz and Shelley Christie will be a non-voting member. This time I'd need a motion to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Move by Olson, second by Pachatsky that we approve of the mayor's appointments to the dear management ad hoc committee as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Just a footnote to that, I wanted to make sure it's clear that it's a Steve Johnson who lives on Main Street.
Okay.
Twelve pack.
Yeah.
Sorry. No, sorry. No, I don't think he grew up with it. Alan, you want to just tell us what you see is gonna, moving forward, when you plan on meeting and?
Our first meeting is going to be on November 14th, Monday evening. And we will be bringing in DNR specialists for the meeting as well as presenting some other medical information, things of that nature. And then have a roundtable discussion about where we want to go. What is it we really want to accomplish with this ad hoc committee? And I tentatively am going to set a timeline of, say, February or report back, if not earlier. It depends on how we resolve all the issues that are before us.
Okay, awesome, thanks. Anybody have any questions, Alan, in the process? All right, well, thank you, everybody that's agreed to be on that committee. And Alan, thank you for chairing that, too, appreciate that. Under new business, we have a memorandum of understanding between the Wisconsin Department of Administration, the Division of Facilities Development, and the City of Opaaca, Wisconsin. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. It's on page 86 of the packet if you have not found it already. This with, between the city and the Department of Administration deals with the King Veterans Home water supply. Probably should have been aware of, about a year ago, the King Veterans Home did a study with the water supply and hooking up to the city, being that a potential connection. And this is just kind of building on that last study. The previous study was more of a quantity base, seeing if our system could handle it, what changes would have to be made. And this one is more of a quality base. They'll be looking much more into the water chemistry and taking samples and looking, requesting some of our past results and data that we typically would submit to the DNR. So this, I guess, understanding is just, they're doing this project, they want our assistance, they want our help, very similar to, I guess, the memorandum of understanding that I came forward with earlier between us and the DNR and the nitrate program where there's going to be much more robust sampling and studying of our water here. So it does open up some risks. Obviously, if we find something that is not good, for whatever reason, we have an ethical obligation to notify the public right away. However, the good side of it is we can learn more about our water system. And then there's a potential connection to the King Veterans Home. As you know, they've had issues with their water in the past. So that pretty much sums it up in a nutshell. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
And it's in the memorandum of understanding, too, but this is totally on the state. So the state is doing the study and they're also paying for the full amount of it, too, so.
That's correct. The state has hired a engineering firm to conduct this study, so all the costs will be through them. Like I said, though, we will be providing some of our historical data and also, well, you know, our guys will have to kind of help out once in a while, they grab a sample here and there, get split samples, that sort of thing. And probably the, I didn't really want to say this, but probably the best way to, I guess, compare this to anything is kind of like the Flint, Michigan ordeal where there was a change in water supply and that was, you know, it really impacted. And that was pretty much a water chemistry issue. So they are trying to make sure that if they do connect at King, they don't have something similar to that. So I mean, it's, it's a good study, but there are some risks here.
Good. And we did have our city attorney look at the memorandum of agreement and he's okay with that, so we are asking that we move forward with this memorandum of agreement. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd move to approve the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that.
Motion by Keeland, second by Whitman that we approve of the memoranding of understanding between the Wisconsin Department of Administration, their Division of Facilities Development, and the City of Opaaca, Wisconsin for this study at no cost to the city. No dollar cost to the city. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks. Justin? Next, we have the purchase of a squad car. Brian? Chief, I'm sorry.
Chief. Thank you, Mayor. Normally, we haven't gone out for bids for our squad cars until later in the year and they've gone into, for capital, we'd be looking at 2017. We have an opportunity right now with the, with our budget that we have, that we can go out and we can get 2016 pricing on the squad cars right now. And what that means is we can save roughly $1,000 by ordering our squad car now. And any money that's left in our equipment budget, we can go ahead and if there's money that's there that's available, we can start purchasing equipment for that squad this year. What that'll allow us to do is, for borrowing money next year, I've spoken with Kathy and Henry and the mayor briefly in regards to this, but what that does is that might, that's going to reduce what we actually potentially borrow for capital next year. We estimated the total purchase of the squad car to come in at approximately $50,000 with all the equipment. And if we're able to reduce some of those costs this year with $1,000, we're always talking about trying to find a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there. And we can go ahead and we can save ourselves at least $1,000 this year just in the savings of buying the car and also potentially the cost from our equipment budget that we can purchase additionally for the squads. And, you know, going forward, in the future, you know, if we're looking at multiple squad cars and we're doing this this time of year, we're looking at maybe $2,000 a year that we're saving if we have to purchase two squad cars. So I would be looking for your approval to go ahead and purchase that car this year for 2017 with the 2016 pricing.
Okay, anybody have any questions, like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we buy the squad cars now rather than wait until 17?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut that we approve of the purchase of a police squad car for the 2017, but using, getting the 2016 prices. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have the youth agreement between the City of Opaaca and Town of Farmington. Henry's going to pinch hand, I think, here for Aaron.
Yes, sir. Aaron's memo is on page 87. He does a super job of kind of summing up what we're, what we're here to deal with. This is the third and final township to enter into updated agreements for youth recreation services. This agreement is slightly different than the other two townships, Dayton and Opaaca, in that they did not want to enter into a three-year agreement. They voted to enter into a one-year agreement and they would like the ability to relook at this at this time next year. So it's a one-year agreement. So it's not exactly the same to the other agreements. But the town board, Farmington Town Board unanimously approved the agreement and be looking for a motion for us to adopt this.
Let me ask a question, Henry, now that I'm looking at this. This, it looks like what we have in our packet, which is starting on page 88, okay, has an agreement with the city and all three townships, so we have two of the townships that have three-year agreements and one township that has one, one-year agreement. Are we going to have to approve this whole agreement again next year or can we just?
Well, you know, there's this, well, it is dealt with if you read paragraph nine, term of agreement. So it does call out Farmington's as being a one-year term. Yes, I guess in theory we'd have to come back and re-execute it or have a separate one just with the Town of Farmington.
What do you think, or isn't it a big deal, John?
Well, it sounds like you're going to have to come back and make a new agreement with Farmington and then probably you would execute a different agreement, another agreement just with them for another year or two years or whatever it is.
Okay, so this one's okay, but?
Yeah, and you wouldn't have to bring the Town of Opaaca, Town of Dayton in there either, just the Town of Farmington, the next thing comes around.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so with that, we have the three townships that we normally had. We're hoping still, of course, that Aaron can have some discussion with the Town of Lynn and hopefully we can get them as part of our agreement in the future, too. But they are not a part of this at this time and we'll continue to work on that. I know there's five children out in the Town of Lynn right now that could probably use that. So we would need a motion to approve this, this youth agreement.
I'll move to approve the agreement with Farmington for the one year.
Okay. We have a motion by Dave Peterson, second by Eric Olson that we approve of the youth agreement with Town of Farmington. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Henry, thanks. License report number 1340, there's two individuals on there, again, pending background checks and payments and fines. We would need approval of this.
Move to approve license report number 1340.
Motion by Keeland, second by Pachatsky. Right, okay, that we approve license report number 1340. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, we got, under our issues, project discussion, we have talked about the railroad quiet zone and Justin has done a lot of research on this, so, Justin, you want to help us out here?
Sure will, Mayor. Okay, my memo, I made a memo for this, starting on page 94, going, going all the way to the end of the packet at page 110. So about a month ago, a resident came to council requesting that we look into this. The horns, train horns are noisy, especially late at night, early morning, which they are. Put a little fun fact in there that a train horn is about 96 to 110 decibels, which is, well, standing pretty close to a jackhammer running. So it looked like there could be some benefit here in our community. So since then, started looking through the Federal Railroad Administration guidelines and regulations and it's, there's quite a bit there. Federal, federal government, so obviously there's, there's going to be quite a bit of red tape to get through. So I guess kind of the important, kind of the tidbits of it is, a quiet zone has to be at least a half mile in length of a, from a crossing. So you take a crossing a half mile in either direction, that is the quiet zone. So a train, as soon as it reaches that point, cannot blow its horn. So if you're looking at the agenda packet here, on page 96, I have a map, Rhonda made that up for me, showing the crossings in our area. And the highlighted yellow of the railroad tracks, that would be a half mile in either direction of all those crossings. So essentially, if we were to go forward with this, this would be the ideal situation. The crossing Larson Road is not within the city, that would be Town of Opaaca. So any type of quiet zone establishment would have to be, I guess, approved by them or they would have to be involved in discussion. And obviously, any cost would most likely be borne by them as well. So I guess getting back to what it takes, so when you silence the train horns, you're obviously increasing the risk of crashes. So to try and negate that risk, they have developed kind of a process of how to minimize your risk. And most of it has to do with just installing additional devices, whether traffic control or these train gates. We'd have to get into basically kind of a committee formation between, well, somebody from the municipality, somebody from the federal railroad, somebody from CN Railroad, and kind of review all these crossings to see where the risk would be. And then there's like a calculator online you have to run through and I have not done that quite yet, but it would be kind of like the next step. So at a minimum, each crossing must have flashing lights, gates, constant warning time or CWT circuitry, a median barrier, additional signage, and power out indicators. So obviously, the gates need to fall, flashing lights. The constant warning time circuitry is something that's an automatic thing for the train operators as they're driving. It pretty much lets them know when they should start signaling their horn. And in this case, they would not be doing it, but the gates would automatically close for them. And the power out indicators, well, if we have a power outage, there'd be something on at each crossing that is, well, would function without the use of electricity telling power's not working, so the trains, or these gates are not going to close. So getting into it and looking to see what we could possibly do to establish this. So I'd like to direct your attention down to page 99. It's a little flyer from the Federal Railroad Administration, basically saying there's a couple options that you can do. So you can see the one picture showing current. Well, that's pretty much what we have at every single crossing is, is the lights and the gates on the one side. And what, well, that's an issue, is a person can weave through there. They don't hear the train horn, they think a train's not coming, something's malfunctioned, they'll weave through. It was an issue that was identified back in the eighties when they first started establishing this. So what the options are, is with option one or two shown here, you can do four gates, which basically blocks off anybody from doing that. Or option two is to put some sort of median obstruction to prevent people from doing that as well. And that median obstruction must be at least 100 feet from the railroad itself back into the road. So going back to the map of looking at these crossings, pretty much the median crossings could fit at every crossing with the exception of Wesley. That's over there by Alderman Pachatsky's house. Now, there's just not enough room going off of Elm Street, turning up. So there would be some major modifications there. We could go to the four gate system, but talking to CN, each gate in signal is $100,000. So we would have to put two additional gates there to establish this. The other option is to make major modifications to the roadway, restricting turning into, I guess, from Elm Street into Wesley and then from Omen down to Elm as well. But again, you'd be doing some major road construction. I didn't put a dollar amount on that, but probably pretty pricey. And finally, the other option was with Wesley would be just to shut it off altogether, just to close the crossing. Now, there's a benefit to this and there's also a negative. The benefit is we'd get roughly about $35,000 from CN and the federal government, I guess, as a, what was that, how did you describe that, Henry? A cost or a risk mitigation benefit? Basically, they, we'd be shutting off crossings, so we're reducing their risk, their liability. So there's, there's money they would give us that we could just pretty much use however we want. Some of that we'd have to use for safety improvements. But obviously, the negative is all those people that live in those couple subdivisions would have to drive around to 49 to get to and from. So for the, the minimum cost besides Wesley at each crossing with these median barriers, there's several options, but shown on the memo, they're all pretty pricey. And I looked these, these prices up recently. So about $10,000 on the minimum for these things that are called separator, curb, and delineators. They're just little plastic almost speed bumps that lay on the double yellow and then delineators, which are plastic flexible poles, pretty much. So 100 feet each side would be, still be about $10,000. And then additional signing, which pretty much equates to just a sign that says no train horn. And again, depending on the crossing location, another $1,000, $2,000. So for each crossing within the city, it would roughly be, so about $50,000, $55,000 to establish this, if we were to go that route.
Except at Wesley. You can't use those delineators there.
Well, Wesley, no, we can't because we don't have enough.
So it'd be more money there from what I'm reading.
Well, unless we closed it, then we'd be getting that incentive money.
I would get a lot of calls, I think.
Justin, I used to live up there and went through that crossing every day and if you have to go out, you have to go out past the High Bridge on 49 and that's a terrible intersection. It's the Town of Opaaca out there. That would, you can hardly make a, if you're going north on 49, you want to turn onto that street, you almost cannot do it. So there's going to be major reconstruction there to make that intersection safe. Because you're stopped at a stop sign right there, right now, at an angle, there's no, there's no flat spot to stop behind the stop sign there. So closing that would not be an option. They already lost one crossing up there already, just down, what's the street there, Scott?
Holbeck?
Holbeck?
Yeah, they already lost one crossing up there for that neighborhood up there already, so.
Yeah, I believe that intersection you're talking about is not even in the city. That's a township.
Right, that's township is where they have to come out on, so.
And then the turning left would be dangerous at best, well, it is now because you'd have to go back against the grain up over the High Bridge, which you can't see, so I.
Well, in, in your information you have here, too, you didn't really talk about what's in the Town of Opaaca either, right? But, I mean, you talked about it in your, in your packet here, but there would be some costs there, too.
Well, it would be pretty much what I described. Larson Road has the gates and the lights on just the one side, but it's the township. Now, I don't, I doubt they'd be willing to bear this cost. If they did, you know, they have these options again of doing this median barrier in the signage. Now, the problem with Larson is the roadway there is really narrow, you know, and if you're putting something in the median, you're probably going to have to widen the outside. And then if you've been out there, which I'm sure most of you have, it's steep. It's a steep drop off off those ditches. So again, you're talking pretty expensive cost for road upgrades there. You know, and then the additional gates, if you just went four gates, well, then $200,000 for put two new additional gates up there. So if they, if this was something where we had a lot of people and the council was for it, like, let's try and do this, the town could say no and we could still establish this within, just for our crossings. And that yellow line on the map would basically be right underneath that 49 High Bridge. So the train, I guess, coming through the city, if it was heading westbound, wouldn't really make much noise. Coming eastbound. Coming eastbound, all those people in the Swan Park area would hear it until it got through the crossing.
And that's where we're hearing most of the discussion, is from the Swan Park area.
Well, I guess, I've only... I'm working on this based on just the one person that came in here who was hoping to get this established. And thought it was worth taking a look at.
I believe his address was listed as Shear Street. I looked back in minutes. I don't know if that's where this gentleman lives for sure, but that's down by the water plant, isn't it, or something?
By you. Yeah. Across the river from you.
Is he in your work area?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's two?
Well, I mean, it's for informational purposes only tonight, council. There... obviously, there is no recommendation. You should probably take the information that you have and go forward with it and see what people in the community, if they come up and approach you about that. I mean, it seems to me, at the time, it seems very cost prohibitive for us to be able to do this, especially when, you know, the... again, it's a safety issue, obviously, and by sounding the horn, that's helping you for safety reasons. So it's a tough call, obviously, to put the cost into this. So let's take that information. We'll talk about it in the future. If we have more people that come forward that would like to look at doing this in the future, we'll certainly have this on hand for us. I'm assuming you didn't have a recommendation for us tonight?
No. No recommendation. This was just information only. I got a couple pictures in here as well with our various crossings and some of the other issues close to driveways. Pretty much the same thing as like what happens at Wesley Street. You'd have to somehow reconfigure the driveway or restrict it to like a right-in, right-out sort of thing. And then at the very end is a brochure from the Federal Railroad Administration, which sums it up pretty well, if you guys are looking for this extra information.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Justin, for all the work on this. Appreciate that. Anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make? All right. Let's move on then. Communications, recommendations of the mayor. Only... who is responsible for these nice little...
Believe it on Scott.
Yeah.
Very nice.
I requested them a while ago from Henry. When we go to different functions, it's nice to have our...
Right? Yeah, absolutely.
Nice.
Okay. So, yeah, great. Sounds good. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm over.
Motion by Kealan.
I already seconded.
Okay. Second by Hagan. To adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, November fifteenth, 2016. Subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? We are adjourned at 6:34 PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Have a great night.
Yeah.